Call this meeting to order. All right, Karen roll call, please.
Doug.
Peter.
Karen. John.
Here.
Gary.
Here.
Here.
All right, we will open up the floor with citizen comment for anything that's on this agenda. Yes, we can. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda. A second. Bye bye.
You and I.
Bye bye.
My time.
Now, we can move on to the citizen comment for anything that is on the agenda tonight. Anybody has anything to speak about tonight, feel free to stand up, give me your name and your address, and we will listen.
Hello, my name is Mary Cooper. I'm a resident. I live at 255 Solemi Avenue, Florida. And I'm here tonight to get a better understanding of the rezoning for Thunderville Estates. I'm not, from the literature that I receive, I really can't tell what area is impacted. I certainly have concerns about anything being rezoned in my backyard. Our, in our area, we have over $3 million of residential property in our immediate area that I feel is kind of sold that property based on the fact that we thought we had to do some kindness. And that we're hopefully protect that, rob out the community, so what you want to do is right for the, for the city. But again, I, my name is just to get a little better understanding of what, what exactly is being rezoned in that location.
Does anybody have all, all same consent? Okay, anybody, anything else to add to that?
I don't know what to add. I, I kind of feel like it's going to be a done deal. Anybody? One of the tents are coffee houses there already, and they're ready, drive-throughs already. So my question is, is it an argument going ever that if there could be some sort of fencey or trees or something to block the constant lights? Because right now, when you see any restaurant or any fast food place, it's a constant stream of lights. And for us, that's going to be in our windows constantly all night long, as soon as it starts getting dusk till midnight, you know, if it's one of them. So that would be my concern. If this is a done deal already, I hope to at least take into consideration some sort of barriers so we don't have to see that all the time.
So yes, this is moving from C1 to C2, correct?
Correct.
Can you kind of give us a rough, what, what basically changes of that?
Sure, it, it just allows for a little bit more retail component and allows a restaurant or if there's a, let's just say a local pharmacy goes in, a small mom and pop shop, so you can have a drive-through component. The C1 doesn't allow that, the C2 does. And since Jumble Coffee is going to have a drive-through only, we noticed that we needed, it wasn't the appropriate zoning for that. So that's why this change is being made. It's not going to allow for, and I know this might sound really strange, but like Walmart or any, you know, big ticket retail businesses to go out there. But.
I find it do more of 161s only, and yet you're actually right, but there's also, I'm reading the list of C2s and what you want to blindly allow anything to be done on C2. One of them is a grand elevator. I really don't want to have a grand elevator sitting, I mean, it never happened. We really don't want a visual repair shop with air, air tools and everything else. Who knows, it's going to be sold, who's going to be moving in there?
The only thing that I can tell you is the zoning ordinances themselves, along with the other ordinances that we have, are very outdated. As the community grows, we see the need to make those changes and the ordinances are something that need to be looked at. I certainly wouldn't make a recommendation to.
But what I'm saying is, we've already agreed to the C1, we knew that was the rule that we want our properties. Now you want to change the rules after we've bought the property and allow these other businesses to come in? Which I don't think is fair and right to us, because we're in jeopardy of lose our, our profitability on our property.
And, and I can assure you that there are a number of those on there that we would not allow. I would certainly not allow.
I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm sorry, but I can read what's on here, and, and you can't change this after they've built. And after it's sold, after they've built, you can't change that because you're allowing it.
That's what we're experiencing now with Jumbo, because what they built, what they told you they were building is what they're building.
So my question is, who's, who's watching over these folks and who's, who's in control? Is the pathfinder on his own to do what he pleases, or is the city, are they governing this?
The city is governing this.
So how did this Jumble Coffee get through without having the proper permits or the proper zone?
It was just an oversight, I would have to believe.
Well, I, I'm just saying, if I, I've dealt with this stuff before and I know what happens. People make mistakes, I understand that. I'm just looking at this list of all these properties they want to change. I don't understand why they have to change all these properties. I guess the ones on the, on the Thunder Hill Road, that's, I can see that. Now that's fine, but your talking stuff is bumping right up to residential properties right now. The one, the one is the C, the C is, that bumps up all the, all these private homes. At least it wasn't according to Beacon, uh, numbers, I would like to spread a little information we're giving of what's being sold.
And I found it really interesting, because Slavic was who we dealt it for our home.
I'm dying to know where.
C2 says that any residential has to have the first floor as business. Well, that's not what that apartment building is set up for, he said that too. I guess there's so much confusion, and the letter really didn't explain or outline in the, yeah, the, with the big map. But you had to go on Beacon, you had to really look into things and see where A, B, C and all the other lots were located, so.
And I, and I know as soon as you okay this, and he's got this, whatever. They know they can do whatever they want, they can build off of this list, and you can't stop them. Because you're pulling a rug, you're changing the rules again, and you can't do that, because you'll end up in a court of law, and I know all that goes.
Well, and, and again, we, we can't, we can't stop development from happening, because it has to go through planning and zoning. Planning and zoning would make the recommendation to the council. The council has the right to accept it or deny it. So there are measures, there are.
Or, or a rule, and I also know they've got a rule.
And there are measures in place, and I can assure you that there's no council member here that would want a grand elevator out on Thunder Valley Drive.
I don't know. And that's, did he, how do we know these rules will be on this council the next time? That's what I'm saying.
And I appreciate your comments, I really do.
Well, I'm just saying that do bill it this year. Why are we changing, doing a swoopy change in all of it? Why don't we just do the ones that are on the road and, and let it be, because we kind of all kind of figured that's the way it's going to be done anyway. And that would cover your problems with your apartment building and the, and that property.
Let's, let's, let's hold this for, for the, the public hearing portion of this. Just for, this is for, for comments, we can get into this deep.
Well, I think we got a line saved with this. I'm sorry, we're, we're just trying to.
And I can appreciate that, and, you know, I think, you know, from our perspective, we're, we're trying to, to do a good job balancing the residential, residential, the residents, I should say, along with the needs and wants of, of what residents throughout the whole community wants. They want the amenities, you know, in the community, you know, they want, you know, nice, nice places to live. So I think it's, it's a balancing act that we're trying to, trying to, trying to accomplish. So, you know, with, with every good thing, right, there might be, you know, something that comes along that some people aren't real happy with. So we've got to, we've got to balance all of that.
So I might understand then, this is just a reading, and this goes back to the zoning?
No, this, this, well, the, the public hearing is tonight, and then we will vote on tonight whether to change, make the change.
Actually, you can take it. I, I don't, I don't think it can go back to planning and zoning at this point. It's ready for the first reading, and by ordinance, we have three meetings, now you have the right tonight to waive the second and third. And I do have that in the footnotes, that I, I believe Jumble is prepared to open at the end of December. So it's better to have the proper zoning in place before they open, and we only have one meeting in December. So, again, that's the, the council's choice.
But that goes back, once you leave this ruling, then there's no going back. That's, that, that's what I'm, and that's what I'm hearing. You, you can't go back. Once you okay this C2 of all of the properties.
Can you.
That's your C1.
What the properties, I mean, is it, is it, is it just along Thunderville Street? It is. It's Thunder Valley Drive.
Thunder Valley Drive.
Yeah, it's on both sides. It doesn't affect any residential.
But it does bump up against the residential.
It does, it does.
And then it also includes the green space by the manner.
Yeah.
Lot C and Lot A are non-buildable lots.
No, I'm talking about.
All right, let's, let's, let's move this conversation on to the public hearing portion. I appreciate, want to keep things moving here. Okay, so we will move to the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda? Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Bye bye.
Karen, I.
Bye bye.
My time.
Let's, I will go directly to the public hearing, or at least, I suppose. All right, now we will open, need a motion to open, or just open the public?
Just open.
We'll open the, uh, public hearing for the, the rezoning of Thunder Valley Estates. Again, if you haven't spoken, please address name, and we'll continue with that. Just, does anyone from, anyone from the council have any, anything to add or thoughts or concerns on this?
And then, was that just phase three, that was rezoned?
Yes.
So Lot A that they're talking about is actually, or Lot B is actually Thunder, it's one, it's actually a detention pond, but not rezoned.
Is that the, that's a real big one?
No. It's a little triangle down by the cul-de-sac down there.
Yeah, that's Lot A.
That's Lot A, that's, that's Lot A. That's Lot A, that's a detention pond.
I'm talking about Lot B. That's behind those, Lot B is that triangle, the other triangle.
Real big one that kind of goes over.
No, it's a small one.
There's a Lot A triangle.
Yes.
Karen, could you bring up, could you bring up?
It's on your map. 141, 0451, 001.
It's on the map?
Or, or 1.
What are you looking at?
We don't know that's. Lot C is in the floodplain. That's unbuildable anyway.
Whatever, then why is it being, why is it changed, being changed? It's actually, it's supposedly in, in, yeah, it's, it's a city-owned property. At least it is on Beacon.
Shouldn't be, yet.
That's why they have it listed.
We've got a prospect going to.
Well, they must have changed it. Yes.
Lot A is in the floodplain, Lot C is in.
Do you want Beacon or do you want the?
I don't know, but Lot C and Lot B.
C is non-buildable, that's where the creek's at. You can't build anything on that lot.
No, yes, that's all.
It's all, it's, it can't build.
It's not, we have a little bit of a issue there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Look, this lot here, this lot C, that's a lot of the creek sits on. And that's, that is non-buildable in the floodplain.
Then why is it being changed, my question?
Thunder Valley.
Karen, if you scroll down, you can start.
That's.
If it's unbuildable, why?
And this, we're, we're going to bring this up here.
That's not, that is not.
Did I spell Thunder right?
Yes, yes.
I got the number, if you want to search by that.
Thunder Valley Drive is right there.
That's phase two. That wouldn't be in there either.
There we go.
That all the state detention. If you look at Thunder Valley, it's phase number three. People think change is everything. Three is this line. Yeah, run this. But this isn't built. This is not built.
All right.
Yeah. This is. The drive-through business, I don't think it's necessary.
No.
Yeah, correct. Well, it, it all depends on traffic.
There we go.
All right.
Right here. So Lot C is in the floodplain, for the creek, so it's not buildable.
Why are you changing?
So that, that hockey stick looking one is all floodplain.
B and C is, why are we doing?
Because it's all part of that phase that was originally set as a C1.
Well, it's separated now.
What do you mean they're separated?
Well, I mean, they're separated by lots, and each one of these are designated.
Sure. Because we needed to list the lots that we will rezonate. So initially, C1 was a designation for all of those same lots that are being looked at to be rezoned as a C2.
Yeah, I understand that. I mean, about all these on Thunder Hills.
Drive.
Drive, Thunder Valley Drive.
Can we take that lot out? Can we, can we take that lot out?
I can.
You can take any lot out that you'd like. I would rather not, because they were all brought in as a C1. So I see, I think it's only for consistency's sake, that this is the way it was brought to planning and zoning, and they agreed as well. Nothing is ever going to be built there anyway. Uh, because you can't, you cannot, you cannot build in a flood, floodplain, so.
Unless you bring it up, they're great.
No.
No, that's actually, that's, that's.
That's actually a lot away, isn't it?
That's an actual floodplain. It, it really floods back there.
Well, yeah.
And it's, whatever rain, it'll, it'll wash that pretty good.
Are you asking what's?
Is it, is it possible to, is it possible just to, if you look at the south side of Thunder Valley Drive, can I look at that, right? With that, if you just look at the south side of Thunder Valley Drive, I mean, is that the compromise that would allow? If you wanted to drive through there, at least if it was in the back, it would be towards the highway and it wouldn't impact us? But it's, it's really prohibiting what kind of development can go on the north side and still be within that zoning.
So that's not a change.
It's also how we got.
That's not what she, she has to do. It enters the past.
So this is, I'm, I'm Mark Huler.
Karen, that's off.
Before that.
Was it off her?
So is there a, you know, I don't look back, we have a brewery there, we have trouble stopping. And, and, and I learned that this is something.
Two hundred layers.
Go, that, that would actually attract the neighborhood.
That's like one from eleven.
Something like a pharmacy or something like that.
See it.
Is there a general plan of things that you're planning to put in that building, drive through, in that service time there?
We're not planning.
We're not, we're not.
And he would approach us to see if it would be a suitable fit for that, that person.
And develop for being.
Slavic.
Is Slavic here today?
No, he's not.
When does he get involved with us from that perspective?
You as a resident or us as, I don't believe he would have any need to be in contact with the residential component of it. He would come to the city to see if it meets the, the zoning requirements, and then we would take it from there. And if it were, if it were to be something that would be a special use, then it would come back before planning and zoning for them to review and then brought back to the city council.
So the, the second lot in on the north side, right, is being developed right now, that's a strip mall or a small.
Right off the Cox Springs.
Is it not the first one though, it's the second?
It's the first one.
It's the first one. Oh, it's on the south?
It's on the south side, yeah.
Actually.
Yeah, they're all on the south side, they're being developed there.
Yeah. Other than Darkburg.
Darkburg on the north.
Is it?
It's on.
It is, but yeah, that's her, that's her, they're on the run.
On the north, it's on the other side of the creek.
For me to listen to this.
No, I'd. I see three options. Basically, I see three options. One, move the whole thing through as C2. Option two is take out the floodplain, leave that C1. And option three would be on the south side to have that C2.
Say that last one again.
On the south side of, she just, Thunder Valley Drive, have that C2.
Split it, split it in half, right?
Or can we get a variance on a zoning? Just create a C1 and get a variance.
Then you're just getting it, it's what they call spot zoning, and it, it's really messy. Typically, cities, towns or municipalities don't like to do that, because once you give a variance to one business, then the next one's going to be lining up, well, you do it for this business, for us, and then it just becomes very, it's just very messy.
It can be done.
Well, anything can be done.
Yeah, anything can be done.
You guys are the last.
Sorry?
You are the last one to have to call you folks on the council.
Right, we're aware of that.
So, I mean, am I wrong, is that the options that?
I don't see any other options.
Talk and C2 on the south side.
Spot zone. You say spot zone.
But please keep in mind, if we have a business that's a reputable business that has a drive-through on the north side, we're going to be back there doing something again.
Well, maybe CrossFit or Slavic could be interested in putting up buffers of some type and giving them a little bit of a guarantee that they won't have.
I believe the zoning requires that if you have a commercial zoning, that you have to have a buffer between that and the residential.
What classifies as a buffer?
It could be like arboretums, bushes, trees. I don't believe it means fencing, but it can be.
Would that help situation with anybody?
You know, I, I moved here two months ago. This is one of the reasons why I moved from to be, because I have this fact issue medical. And, yeah, I mean, you go from what we have now to a roll of our variety. That's really going to take away from the enjoyment of my property and probably the value of our property. So I respectfully request that you consider either limiting it to the south side, and I understand, and, and that you're, I understand your position, but it would be nice if citizens were, us as residents were, were be heard on this, and I feel like that's very important.
What's the width of the, like someone used the hockey stick looking portion of land up there? How, how many feet is that of the floodplain?
A little over 300 feet.
At what point do you want to measure, John? The widest point?
I guess, yeah, I don't. Back of the property above there to the.
It's about 150 months feet.
So that'll, that'll always be what it'll be right there. So you'll have your green space, then nobody's going to build there, because that's the floodplain.
Fact that I don't, with all due respect, I don't want him to, on the other side of that.
I'm sorry?
24-hour drive-through in the back. You know, we're protected from that now.
Well, they're saying that, that floodplain never be built in, well, then why is it being changed over to C2 if it's never going to be built on?
Well, the intent is to, was to, correct me if I'm wrong, was to change it as a block, right? Wasn't like we were just picking that that would keep from spot, spot zoning, right? And that's what, that's what this would be potentially, is that just bring it all in, because that's what it came in as. So do it, change the whole thing, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So keeping from, keeping that same mentality of why we want to do the whole thing.
So green space isn't a separate designation?
No.
From?
There isn't a zone, green space, then you don't have a green zone. I don't, I'm not.
I thought Slavic told us that he was required to have so much green space in the subdivision. We were looking at fine towns, when we went through our home with him, he was our builder. He told us that he was required to have so much green space with the subdivision. Is that, was that a two-state agreement?
I, I was, and I apologize, I've only been here for five months, I'm not sure what the, what the conversations.
We don't have a, we don't have an ordinance, it's just, they got a, for every, whatever, every 200 acres, you have five acres of green space or anything like that.
The only thing close would be the stormwater ordinance, and that does say something about retention in it.
Right.
But at the time, this building, it wasn't in place.
Those are the difference between a green space and a lot zone? Because I thought that was a retention basis, that really is really nice looking, because it has bushes in it.
I think we're talking, there, there's a different retention, pot, retention pod, right?
Right.
Which, which lot is that on?
That triangle piece up there.
249.
That triangle up there.
Yeah.
His house.
Off to the, under the right?
I'm sorry?
The triangle, the triangle?
The other triangle.
Oh, that one there, okay.
Like anybody's complaining about A4. Or the, I think, Perry Panto's may be good, like about the noise and everything that will possibly occur when you do go on that north side of that road.
You build on the north side of that road, and at, at night you have deliveries. In the morning, you have.
Trash pickup.
Pickup, and you could have 24-hour drive-through, and.
We're going to see a problem that brewery this summer, as was guaranteed, that patio that they have out there with noise.
They, when they had their soft opening, this lot.
You, you could hear the.
Right, and, and, and that's, I can appreciate that, I don't want to live next to, to noise either. But this has been zone commercial as, for a long time.
But there's lawyers.
Right?
No, 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 we, we understand that, that is totally the same, it's possibly worse than what the brewery already has bring into us.
C1 and C2, C2 has three times the type of businesses that C1 allows. So when we saw the list compared to what we were told, it was zoned at, you know, now it's a whole different story, so.
And I respect the drive-through for the pharmacy, that would be, I mean, that'd be great, I think that, but that's, that's certainly different than what could be there. Sure. That's the issue, that's our concern.
Thanks, Alex.
260 Gillette. We live right behind that, that cash base, you know, out there, pretty much right in line with everything that's going on. And part of the problem is that land is so much higher than our land. So it's not going to be only the drive-through, it's going to be the lighting that those businesses provide. So like if you got a doctor's house or all these places that are told, in there, they'd be, they'd be gone at five o'clock if there would be current highlights on. What we'd be, excuse me, we'd be afraid of is McDonald's or something that two o'clock in the morning or whatever, doing the drive-through, that's part of the problem. The other part is going to be the lights from that business that's going to be above where we live. So it eliminates the drive-through, eliminates the lights, C1, you keep C1, and you eliminate those extra businesses. I'm kind of in favor of these folks here, keeping C2 on the other side of, on the side of the road.
But that's us not going to eliminate the, the, the lights.
Oh, that's a farther way.
Anybody else? Does that have anything? Motion to close public hearing. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
Bye bye.
You're mine.
Bye bye.
You're here.
My time.
So I think, Doug, you're right, we've got three options. A, nothing, rezoned as C2. Zone the south side of Thunder. Uh, zone to south side of Thunder.
Valid.
Valley Drive.
Right. As C two. Or just do the waterway, leave that as C one.
Or spot variances, right? That would be the third option, I would.
Well, if Slavic has more land, more land being developed, maybe we should talk to him and. See if he has some ideas, cuz he's gonna wanna keep his residents happy too.
So what, what, what is the downside other than just spot zoning for the variances? If that, we just did a variance for Jumble? And it's.
Then you're gonna have the possibility of having another business come in that wants that drive-through component. And then you would have, then you're really getting in the spot zone. You're gonna have.
Is it three lots, three lots?
Yeah, but it's, it's not to say it's not available, right? It's just that we have to go through the process of spot zoning.
And I would not recommend that.
But maybe a temporary variance.
There's no such thing as a temporary variance.
We can make one.
What do you mean by, I mean, cuz they're, that.
I mean, we do variance until we're there, so. Because we don't wanna keep them from opening up, they've been.
No.
Working hard at it.
I, I don't understand why we wouldn't wanna, what, why we're such, why we're getting pushed back on. Doing a C two versus C one if they're not all, I mean, if this whole area is C one right now.
Right.
Right, and Jumble wants to be C two, so let's make them C two. We get another business that comes in, let's say. I don't know, I don't want McDonald's, but something that's gonna have a drive-through like Walgreens or something. And then we can spot that as C two, do it as needed. I don't, I don't see the issue with that, maybe I'm missing something. Other than, other than, it's not like it's not all commercial, because it's all commercial. The only difference is, is, is the drive-through aspect to it. At the same time, by doing that, I kinda like that idea, at the same time, by doing that. We could work with Slavic and say, yeah, we don't want it on this side of the road. You know, so, so, so we can pick and choose to tell them where, where it should go. It's not like we're saying it's not available or not possible, right?
But, but are we opening ourselves up to? I, just throw something out there, something over, over here now. Now they wanna put. Wanna put a house in the middle of commercial, I don't know why you'd wanna do that, but wanna put a house in someplace that's commercial. And when we did it over here, we spotted someone over here, why can't you spot someone over here?
So you can't do that now. You know what I mean?
Doug, are you saying that you're more in favor of the south of Thunder Valley Drive being C two? You're saying we're gonna tell Slavik, ask Slavic to?
I, I'm, I'm favorable of saying just south of. The road is C two, or I like the idea was, with like Jerry saying, this spot zoning where if we know it's gonna be a McDonald's. And we know that it ain't gonna work good up at this end, we can tell Slavic, no, we ain't gonna go for that, it has to be over here, then we'll rezone that over there.
I think we just need to have more input as to what he has going in that whole area as well, you know what I mean?
I think at this point, he doesn't know.
I know, but I'm just saying in the future, like the, the little strip mall thing, I didn't even know about it till it was already getting put up and it's doing right now, so. Um, that kinda input or just notification and. Bringing that to at least the council's attention would be nice, so. And then maybe we can help, you know, with this input that we got from the public in their lots, keep it from happening. At the very minimum, through the south side, C two.
I think it'd be more, I would be.
That's where I'm going, that's where.
That's the case. New maps on.
We gotta do the map anyway, it's all C one.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, I'd be more up to do that than the spot, than the spot. I just.
I, I still don't see the. In, in something like this where you're gonna have mixed commercial, right? I don't see the issue with C one, C two for, for different lots, as long as it's commercial. Right? You're not gonna have residential or mental commercial, if you do, then the planning and zoning is not allowed, right? So.
You've got multifamily up at the other end.
Yeah, and.
I'm sorry?
I don't know, that's, that's my two cents. Cuz we don't know the rest of it, right? What's gonna happen there? And I hate to tie our hands. And who's to say we can't do that on the first side of, on the inside of it, if there's something there for a drive-through?
And we do the south side and then. The east side of the, that's not developed, east side of the waterway, is C two?
She's saying the south side of Thunder Valley Drive and then. Basically east of the waterway is C two?
This part.
Yeah.
What chances are he's gonna have the same type of?
Yeah.
Houses on that?
That's all, that's all a part of there.
I mean, sorry, C two, then, then that way the bottom, yeah.
That's fair.
Yeah, then he's only got, what, five lots there that are C one? Plus the hockey stick, that'll, that's gonna be water.
Does that need to change, or we just, it just goes along for the ride?
That, does that, that hockey stick, it just?
That floodplain?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's gonna remain a floodplain, you can never build in it, so you can designate it what you like, we can leave it as C one, or we can change it to a C two.
So I guess we need, need a motion. What direction we wanna take, for your thoughts?
You're gonna have to table this since we're changing everything, so, um. Spring it back on the fourteenth. With the recommendation that the portion that you identified as being C one will remain C one and the rest will remain, will be switched over to C two.
What are we recommending? I don't think we're all taking that.
Work session with Slavic.
Or, yeah, somebody has to talk to him about those five lots.
Find out just what he has in mind and tell him some of his residents aren't happy about.
Well, I had a recent conversation with him and that's why I shared with you, he doesn't know what is going to be developing out there at this point.
But he's still got residential land he's developing, doesn't he?
I, he can, he can build residential on the remaining portion of those lots, that's allowable.
So they'd wanna keep his residents happy, that's what I'm saying.
Sure.
So we should have a discussion with him.
Yeah, I, I can do that for you, I can, I'd be more than happy to, to have one of the, the council members join in on that conversation too.
I'd be supportive of turning everything south to C two and then from the waterway east into C two. And then that way, if he develops housing in that upper area, they already know that it's C two.
Or if he's gonna develop that in housing, do you leave it as C one?
It's my thoughts.
Knowing that you don't, you're gonna, potentially have the same concerns, right?
But, but down the road, all of a sudden now someone wants to build something with the drive, with the drive-through, we'll be going through the same thing.
True, yeah.
That's why I, I don't.
Yeah, I, I can see Jerry's side of it.
Yeah, the entire map, all's gonna be drive-throughs, perfect, right? Then, then C two, the whole bit, right? But there's only one in there now that we know of that's gonna have a drive-through. So, we change the zoning for the entire thing? I just, I don't get it.
Spot zoning may not be all that.
Uh, maybe I'm missing something, but. So. No matter what, we're, if we're not gonna, if we're not gonna switch it all to C two, we. So it doesn't sound like we're gonna switch it off, at this moment, we wanna switch it all to C two, is that correct? So then I think we have to table, we'll have to go to work session, maybe get Slavic. Slavic, you want Slavic in there?
Mm-hmm. Um.
Um, can I ask, do any of the residents have a problem with Jumbo Coffee being there? I mean, that's not anything to do with the issue altogether.
On the south side, you know what we were saying, on the south side of it, so I don't. Their traffic is a lot of the. People's.
They're out pretty much daylight.
If he wants to change the narrative, you know, that's another meeting.
Jumbo's coffee opens early in the morning, it closes early in the afternoon, like four thirty. So the drive-through business, and there are other two stores anyway, is during the day, it's not at night. I don't know.
It's actually not the problem at all, it's the zoning problem that's.
Yeah, we're not, it's not like it's Jumbo or, as you said, the pharmacy.
There's not one coming, by the way.
That isn't, that wasn't acceptable, if the pharmacy was coming in the retail area. Of course, that, that's, that's, that's a whole different animal than what this huge change could mean for us. With having, it opens the door to the ones we got in our backyard. And that's not what we bought our property on.
Thank you.
So like, would, so would it? Make you guys? Happier, like we did, like what, I said if we did everything south. C two. And then everything west of the ditch C two and then left, everything to the east at C one.
Okay, Doug, you're, are you going, you're going the opposite way there?
South here.
Yep.
At east.
South, yeah.
Okay.
And then west, there is junk at C one.
He does want to build houses in phase three.
That's. But, but in phase three, the people will know that that's C two already.
Right. Which we did.
Okay, that conversation, that's a conversation.
Uh, I make a motion to table it, I'll second.
Okay.
Can I?
Can I?
Do you?
Okay.
I think we should give Jumble notice that we'll have.
Jumble's here.
Yeah.
Oh. We will have this, we, we will have this resolved for you. For that, I just, I wanted to make sure, at least we reached out to you, say that we will have it resolved. One way or another, we'll have it resolved.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, thanks for telling me, yeah.
Okay, that was.
Good?
You're good?
Good.
All right.
Yeah, we didn't know that. Yeah, we didn't know that.
Um, okay, one more point of public works. Wanna leave, you wanna leave?
Thank you, thanks Jerry. Talk about slut, huh?
Yeah.
Not, not the good slut.
All right, we're gonna move on to public works, so you're gonna leave, please leave, don't. Hey, guys, we're gonna continue watching, guys. Thank you, thank you. All right. Public works, we are gonna talk about some sludge removal. Eldon, what you got?
All right, well, uh, I don't know. I do, if that, I don't know if you wanna pull that up and, but, um. So basically, we had the lagoon, uh, split material that was in the lagoon, existing lagoons. Uh, part of the contract for the new wastewater plant was to have that dredged out of those existing lagoons and place the bags of the disposal of that state plant. And we had to do that, do some metal issues that were in there, keeping it from being planted by. Um, so as a part of the design process, we had, had that. Quantified sludge, uh, done, take on all those numbers to the quantity within the documents for the contractors to do. Uh, that number, uh, originally was put in there in, uh, three thousand wet tons. Um, and then there was a clear price assigned to that. So, that, um. That's kind of a start here. When they, when the contractor that was dredging the sludge got to the. Base of number four, which is the base where all the wastewater comes into. Uh, they started seeing a lot more sludge than. It seemed, to the point where now we, instead of having about three thousand wet tons. We're estimating that there's currently about six, seven thousand wet tons out there. So it's, it's a pretty significant change in that quantity, and so that triggers in your contract basically. And the process to say, what are we gonna do about this, it's, it's outside of the realm. Kind of normal adjustments. So, uh, worked with Porzin, um, and their subcontractor, uh, Nitroject. Uh, come up with a request and, uh, some of the guys. Uh, there were a couple of things we looked at, one was some of that material could potentially land by because it wasn't necessarily contaminated with the metals that we're worried about. And the other one was to say, okay, what is a new improvised unit price that we can apply to the. Uh, sludge in excess of that region, if it wanted to be tested. So Porzin prepared that, uh, Porzin, um, put together a change order request on the sixteen, which it gets had. And basically, uh. When we reviewed that initially with the city, the, the land allocation, uh, options kind of come out, cuz it ended up being more expensive. Apple to apple comparison than actually taking this all in. And there's a little bit more administrative effort that was gonna be required in the city at that point too. Uh, so what we did look at was, it's all option number three in that change order request. So Porzin provided a new rate for any additional, uh, disposal in excess of the three thousand wet tons at modified price. Two hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-three cents per wet ton, as opposed to the three hundred dollars per wet ton. Um, as a part of that rate, um, and that proposal. There were a couple of conditions and statements that were made. One is that any liquidated damages that the city had in the contract associated with that disposal taking longer, just because there's that much more, uh, will be waived. And then the second, uh, second one would be that, um, the specification and the big bid value are based on a meeting of what's called a total. Total solid or dryness, uh, standard suspect. Um, so it had to be a certain dryness for them to dispose of it. Otherwise, that price, that unit price for that bid would be adjusted back. It was basically what happens if, that the materials didn't have enough time to dry out, we basically mull up and dispose of that water. And we didn't want the city punished necessarily because they weren't able to get it to dry as what, um, specs said it should be. So, that adjustments there. Because they haven't been able to go through a free site on material there, and if one of that condition be waived, it would be a price of three hundred thousand. And then, um, the third, uh, third piece of that was they could start, uh, disposal as noon and a half, basically. Given that. Norris, he only did that done, and some of the things that we would have to do was get. Agreement with the landfill updated to make sure it was still bad, so. Those are, those are the conditions, so, um, we had a. We had a meeting with, uh, uh, Doug and, and all the board's committee and, and that. About a week and a half ago, and kind of went over some of these things and, you know, at that point decided that obviously we need to bring up. The whole council, uh, to bring them up to speed to make sure that we could. Kind of cover some things and explain it all. When we got this discussion, there was kind of a breakdown of. I just, of a balance between the schedule and cost for, for doing this. So, the, from a schedule standpoint, your current contract has completion by the end of the year. I mean, all the limited energies associated with that are a thousand dollars a day, just background information there. The other important deadlines, funding deadline from the EA grant, which had the completion construction, uh, September twenty-seventh of that year, so about three months later. Um, and then finals, final end of the award being that March twenty-seventh following year, so about. Six months after that end of construction, there's an ending for that whole contract where all those funds have to be allocated. And then just basing it on, you know, just time scales that we were looking at, what the landfill had. General rate of acceptance, and how long it would take to actually dispose of what's estimated out there as the sludge. We're looking at, it may be a thirty to thirty-five week, um, period of haul, so over the course of almost ninety ten tons. Um, from the start of disposal, that's thirty-three hours. So in general, if they were able to go through this freeze thaw cycle start, they could quite possibly done by the end of the calendar year twenty twenty-three, or twenty twenty-two, sorry. If they started earlier, um, there's a possibility that they actually be done ahead of that September twenty twenty-two timeline on DEA. So I did check with DEA, they are all over to extending that, uh, or not considering this kind of demolition activity as the construction activities. They're okay with that, but, uh, that March deadline is still kind of a, kind of a hard deadline that the city needs to.
Which it sounds like we'll, we'll still be able to hit, right?
It sounds like we'll still be able to hit it, I just wanna make sure that you've got that timeline and you're aware of this. There's still, and if we pass that September, it's still need to make like an amendment type document, uh, to make sure that that's covered. But that March deadline for now is kind of stopping point listed. And then the other, the other issue there was obviously that property is being transferred next year as soon as that sludge is moving. And then I think you were able to confirm that there's like a specific part.
No, there is no date specified on the contract.
Yeah, but I know that there is some plans that want to get started on at least part of that site. I assume it's starting in spring. And we kind of, we're determined to kind of discuss how we can still make sure that it's all open. That also, if even that structure starts to hurt that period of time, we keep that all open. Uh, because we're at a one site, they, they don't necessarily have plans to develop that, right, that part of it. I just kind of bringing everybody up to speed, so. Um, and then as far as the cost, uh, the total estimated quantity over the bid amount is anywhere from two thousand, four thousand, oh, I times. And so there is consolidation that will occur over the winter months, um, to maybe bring that number down, but I just want the, that's the number we have right now, that's what we're estimating. And so as a result, at that unit, the unit cost, um, in a proposal, it's looking like additional cost anywhere from eight hundred and fifty thousand to one point one four. For that material to be disposed of that. And then the other part of that, where I was talking about that reduced rate, um, part of one condition for the total solid requirement. What that effectively does is bring down the bid unit rate of three hundred dollars a wet ton. It reduces that by three percent for every one percent that are not using the dry as standard. So right now they'd be sitting at about twenty percent solids out there, at the target is thirty percent. So they'd be reducing that current unit rate down from three hundred by thirty percent down to about two hundred and ten dollars per wet ton. So that's partly what's in that cost proposal that you have to be aware of. So. In all, I mean, the, the, the change order request is in front of you guys. It's all in that, there's potential actions either to look at it in the fourth, or there's an option to continue negotiations with Porzen. In which case, I'd like to make sure that, maybe there's a request, maybe a committee that's actually formed from maybe the council members there. They kind of help with those negotiations to the discipline, right in front of the council every two weeks, I don't necessarily want to make huge negotiations for, you know, these discussions. Kind of coming back for a two week basis.
How did we come up with that three thousand wet ton estimate?
So we had a, so this, the all over goods were actually just back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, that right? And so they provided at that time the thickness of the sludge that was in each of the cells. And that, that information along with the, the concentration was used to generate, um, a wet tonnage or a, a volume, so to speak. And then that was converted to a way to be able to go across the scales of the landfill. One of the thing, one of the reasons we did that is because the landfill scales are gonna be what they are. Whether it's, whether it's three thousand, thirty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred, the scale, scale of price, um, is kind of face the value that the contractor has to accommodate. So we had to be able to create a line for them, be able to build that in, um, to accommodate that.
How can we be that far off, three thousand plus another three thousand, four thousand, that's not even close.
I, I realize.
And was it, was it measured, was it incorrectly measured, or I'm just trying to figure out how we could have been that far off on this.
Yeah.
Now stuck with another almost million dollar price tag on something, I mean, this is, that, that's out, that's outrageous.
I agree, yeah, the, as we were progressing through this, um, we were seeing that those sludge numbers were, and then the earlier cells, the ones not where that probably comes in, we were seeing those numbers come in. Essentially, they're telling us they're in line with what they were expecting out there. We got to that cell where the main probably comes in and things kind of ground down to a really slow haul, they were moving really good, moving fast. Ended up just pulling a lot more material out there than what was expected. But yeah, I agree, the, the numbers are way different than what we were anticipating.
And maybe questions, any more questions for?
No, I mean, my opinion is I think we should table it, because I think there's some more negotiation to be done out there, prices. If we table it till the next meeting, we won't hurt anything on deadlines, just gonna push everything back three weeks, right?
Yeah, I mean, the reality, the reality is that I, I have at least a big amount of confidence that even start in March, as long as we're not getting rained on every day. And they're able to actually get started hauling, then I really do feel like by the end of the year, the meeting for January, they'll have that material out of there. It's just gotta be, it's just gonna be a, a long slogging kind of effort in some respect, so.
How much have they hauled already?
They have not hauled any yet. So they, they, they put it in the bags and it's stored, it's actually stored on a, a.
Oh, dry it, dry it. Drying it, basically, drying it's dry.
Yeah, it's in, it's in bags.
Water.
Yeah, it's in bags that'll like, uh, like silk pants that allows moisture to be taken.
Sure, so they, they're doing that now?
That's been, that's been being done since, uh, May or June, when it started, removing it from. The reason that we did that is to allow it to be, to meet the, the landfill requirements, it has, has to be totally taken over, just essentially has to solid enough that it sits on a filter, it doesn't be water down into a lot of.
Eldon, has those lagoons ever been dredged out or cleaned out?
Yeah. That's gonna be my next deal too, I mean, if you take that over, I don't know how long they've been there, thirty years, and they're clean?
The, yes, I remember, so the original cell was the one two and three, kind of kind of the old, built in the, uh, eighties. Yeah, I think it's, or mid-eighties, we can't remember that, um, and then the new big cell was built in ninety-seven.
I remember ninety-seven, I can't get, I just can't get past the question that Jerry had, is how, how can, how can someone look at that and be that far off?
I mean, we're not talking a couple hundred thousand.
Right, I mean, we're just.
No, no.
That's unfortunate.
Value of the, just in general, the overall value of the sludge removal in general was about, um, uh, one point four.
So now we're doubled to the end of this project.
Then we're, our backs against the wall, right, we got the deadline that we have to meet to get.
To get the grant, our grant.
That we're definitely not gonna throw anything, yeah, so.
So did you, Eldon, did you talk about landfill versus just field applied, I mean, is that still, if with all this, that still makes sense to take it to the landfill?
Well, at this point, we, we don't really have the ability to land apply this material. It doesn't mean, so there's, there's one particular decameron in there, all the looking up, that is kind of, it's above the ceiling level to be able to apply.
So I guess, I mean, I still, I mean, we're, it's, it's twice as much as what we thought. I, I ask, who dropped the ball, I mean, I guess, where, where'd the mistake come from?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, and, and I know there's, we put together that bid, that quantity at like, um, right? So I mean, that was from our calculations, it was based on the information that we had on that sludge thickness, concentration, whatever happened to be that we have available.
Where did you get that information from?
So that information was, uh, city hired a contractor to actually perform the testing of that sludge.
So they, so they didn't test right, obviously they didn't test it right.
Whatever they tested wasn't to.
Or they did in one, two, and three, but not four.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I mean, like I said, when we were, when they were going through some areas, so my, I think they were gonna, they were not, they were not seeing as much as they were expecting. But they were also starting with some of the cells that are in the secondary, or hold the secondary, so all that stuff is kind of had a chance to settle out. So I mean, there's, so I mean, the thick outs that were used on the, those cells were also used on the other ones, so.
So lack of better question is how do we hold them accountable for that, I mean, they're the ones that screwed up. Can we? I mean, I'm sure they have an air, air submission policy. That we could go, go back against them, or a bond that they, they would have done.
Yeah, I would have to look into whatever agreement I, I don't know, that's part of the, um, liability, let it allow whatever agreement that they have.
Well, I'm sure, I'm assuming in an agreement somewhere they have, okay, this, use the word quote, right, this, this quote, gonna have a, a five to ten percent variance on it. I mean, this isn't, this isn't a five or ten percent variance, this is a hundred percent. I mean, if I'm a hundred percent wrong in my job, I get fired every day long, all day long.
Yeah.
It's fair, yeah.
So I mean, I guess, in, in maybe doing, your, your suggestion, Doug, what we can do there, but I would like, I personally would like some answers from the subcontractor, what, what happened, why, what was so wrong? And what they're gonna do about it. Cause I don't, I don't think it's, after the fact, your backs against the wall, by the way, we need another million dollars.
Yeah.
I mean.
It's not from them, it's from their calculation, right?
Right, so.
They might not have directly impacted it by doing their, whatever test they did, but the end result is over a million, or close to a million dollars for us, so.
So is there, is this an action item?
Uh, no, this is just for discussion.
So I guess maybe I would suggest, can we, Doug, can you volunteer to be part of the negotiations or not?
Yeah, what kind of negotiations are we talking about here, what, what's even on the table?
Oh, okay.
I actually haven't labeled this action and discussion, so. Right.
I would say, well, that's, that's maybe form, see who wants to be part of that committee to kind of help negotiate, go from there. So I guess we won't have any action tonight? Right?
As long as this doesn't stop anything, so.
Yeah.
They're keeping moving forward, right?
Yeah, this is an activity that was planned to start in March of next year, so we're, we're, we're heading, we're, I mean, basically, we, we got this agreement, but now we're.
So I guess what I would like out of these days, I would like someone from that firm to come explain to us what happened, why they're off so wrong, what they're gonna do about it.
Agreed, agreed, yeah. Like we're old enough for that, right?
I'd like to have a conversation.
But we don't have any options, that's, that's.
Well, that's the thing, that's.
You're just.
X against Y, right?
Yeah.
And Eldon, you'll look at the, um, error and emissions insurance along with the bond?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, they have, they're, they're just.
Okay.
Anything else for Eldon? Thank you.
Thank you.
I know this was a great news to deliver. That's right.
Absolutely.
On the contract payment number fourteen for wastewater treatment facility? Let's see here. Dean?
To my knowledge, that payment is correct.
The payment is correct, no issues with it?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to contact, contract payment number fourteen. John?
My guy. Thanks, Eldon.
Alright, the Highway twenty lift station forcement project order number three, change order number three.
And Jacob's here, if we have any questions for him?
Yes, so this, uh, change order consideration is related to some extra, um, work on sites, a small segment of pipe cap and a corridor. Resulting from the existing pipes serving, uh, the highway lift station was smaller than our records indicated. Uh, it was discovered during construction, uh, we at the time requested a change cost from the contractor, which was out of the scope and realm that we thought was fair, so, uh, working with Dean. For a future project to connect and upsize that pipe, which we're working on and are looking to bid out as a separate project to try to save some costs.
Dean, you're okay with this?
Yeah, so to prevent, as Eldon said, or, I'm sorry. To prevent any more delays in the project, um, we made the decision to have them cordial for future and then move forward with it.
This also extends the project completion date, which was set, uh, which was on the thirtieth of November, um, and they requested an extension to the end of December. Um, and this was due to slope issues on their end with material, uh, equipment at times. As well as some standby time when we, when this pipe size, uh, was discovered and we're looking for slope.
Question? Doug, here, nope. I'll make a motion to go ahead with, uh, lift station and forcement improvement project change order number three.
I'll second.
John?
Yeah, my guy.
Alright, we are on to the sign permits. Core Michelin?
Um, I see no issues with the permit itself, and I actually, Jacob, um, I have Michaela here, so if anybody, Michaela, you wanna hold your hand up? So if anybody has any questions over, this is a rather large request, there's like fifty-two signs, there's outings. Um, just wanted to make sure that nothing came in the right of way, um, everything looks good.
I would say this is the most detailed sign area that I've ever get.
I didn't see any setbacks, so how far back they're gonna be from the road?
It's in the aerial one.
Did I miss that? Okay, I couldn't, I couldn't get it to.
Oh, I just happen to see it, that's the only reason I commented a couple.
So how far back are they?
Page fifteen.
I give you a setback from the center line of the road.
The center line?
From the center line of the road, that's usually not a moving target, so I'm giving measurement from center line to property line.
Like two, right, that were actually, would affect the setback on, on the road?
Yeah, two monument signs, yep. Uh, I may have given you some on the direction.
I think it's on the aerial one, Karen, the other one.
Okay, yeah, there's.
There you go.
Yep.
Right, right, yeah.
So. Our monument sign that is for building H is going to be set back fifteen foot from the property line. And from the property line to the center line of the road is thirty-eight point five foot. So it's set back pretty far. I don't believe the measurements in the brand book. I don't believe they offer measurements in the brand book. Um, but I did have a tech go out to site and take some measurements for me.
Yeah, do we take into consideration? The project that's taking place at this point in time and sidewalk that's going to be added down there in that location?
I was not aware of that project that's going on. Um, are you?
Are?
I'm aware of the sidewalk. Okay.
I mean, I'm with Michelin. I didn't know what was side of that one.
Yeah, there is, um, between the first entrance of, uh, H building.
Yep.
And the second entrance.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, uh, we weren't aware of that at all, you know, that word, um.
I believe if I'm not mistaken, I think it's an eight foot, eight foot block.
Why? Um. Yeah, so I guess we'll put our sign wherever we need to, you know, get them out of the way. That's what it comes down to, right? It's, uh, Michelin standard to have, uh. These monument signs, it's one we're like for mandatory branding, uh, things, so. I reached out to AJ and they didn't have any site plans, so this is why we have just, uh, Google Maps. And some lines drawn, but, um. Yeah, I guess we could get together and figure out. Where the sidewalk's going. If you guys have a site line of that, I'm gonna kind of cross our.
Is that the only real concern is that? Is that the only real concern is that area with the sidewalk in the project?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would the E and G side get sidewalk there or just? Because if I'm a G building.
Only on H. Just on. Only on the south side of the street.
Okay.
Due to the fact that there's so many loading dock areas on whatever you name them, other two buildings on the north side of the road. Yeah, there's so many loading dock areas on that side of the road, so we.
That's right.
Yes. And the sidewalk was included in that area due to the fact that eventually we're looking to have. Walk area for the industrial area in the future.
For, um, installation. Purposes, are you, do you know? How far set in from their property line? Because having the sidewalk on the inside of their property line, wouldn't that push their property line back? Because the sidewalk wouldn't be. On their, like. Considered their part of their parcel, right?
You're asking if the sidewalk would be in the right of way?
It should be in. So we would have to set. Back even further.
I think it was usually twenty, well, twenty feet wasn't enough. It's a. Quick stop, but that's a corner situation where you're not. You're not in the same situation, but. Industrial part, it used to be like forty feet, but not, probably not so much anymore. Um, it's probably closer to twenty, twenty five. But whether, I think those were covenants, which have probably. Gone out by now. So. But I would suggest at least twenty. And if you're on a corner, you want more. If you want, if you're on a corner where there's visibility.
Push it back more. She had to set it twenty now, so it's probably gonna be bad.
Let's set fifteen.
I've got fifteen to the leaning edge of the side and twenty foot from the corner to the center of our pole.
It's just gonna push back in front of the sidewalk. You can see where the existing sign is there, Karen. It's right at the point of the triangle. So she's further back now. With the new one, but that's before the sidewalk, so.
So are we able to approve this subject to. Data Public Works. Sidewalk.
I would say you can approve a contingent upon.
Working with. Public Works and the adjustments with the sidewalk. I'll make the motion to approve this with the contingents of them working with Public Works.
Second. Okay.
John.
My guy. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I just want to call City Hall or something, get my number, which. Next week.
Just email me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'll flag you down next time you grab it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna do anything.
All right, uh. That was a set, uh, resolution setting, I'd setting a date. Which it was proposed to approve development, uh, project development and. Include the annual appropriation tax increment. So we're just basically setting the date.
We are, and I recommended that we set the public hearing for fourteen. Seems like it's gonna be a very long night.
Fourteenth? I'll make.
Well, with a bang.
I'll make a motion to prove that they're, set the date of December fourteenth.
I'll second.
Okay.
Yeah, I.
John.
Julian.
My guy.
All right. Our administration. Fiscal two, two, twenty three T F indebtedness in debt. Yes, certification of Dubuque County.
This is just a procedural thing that needs to be done every year, so it's just showing what we promised to pay.
Make motion to approve the. Certificate.
One second.
Can I?
Got it.
Yeah.
All right, next is setting a public hearing date for the fiscal twenty two budget.
Uh, Karen and I were just having a, a side conversation here, and we'd like to go ahead and set that public hearing for. Got to get my money out of you.
I heard that.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing in December fourteenth.
I'll second.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Good night.
John.
My guy.
All right, now, I guess we'll talk about the setting the date for the special election to fill the vacancy of the mayor. Of the city of Biasta.
There is a resolution, um, that sets that date for January twenty fifth, and Jenny. Put together, um, a timeline, which that is that second document that kind of outlines the stuff that we need to pay.
So this is just setting. The election date for the twenty fifth?
For January twenty fifth, correct.
I'll make a motion to set the. Election date for January twenty fifth.
I'll second.
Okay.
No. No. This is your doing point.
It's not always the easiest, it's the best.
Jerry, hi.
My guy.
Yeah, Dubuque County Snowhogs, snowmobile trail. Are you showing us when they want to set up the trail?
This is all new to me, so.
This is the same as last year.
Was there, is there any concern with the construction that's going on over there?
I don't, I don't believe so. Do you? There shouldn't be any issues.
That should be all done by the time.
They pretty much got construction wrapped up over there. Unless you're referring to anything. East of Biasta. Just east of Biasta Street.
What about down along the? I guess between. Leslie and Cox Springs.
Lift station stuff?
Yeah, lift station stuff down there.
There's a pipe slant down there. Yeah, and they're gonna start. You're talking along.
Month line.
The, the. That's down there on highway twenty. They're gonna start directional drilling next week.
So.
So pending, I guess, upon when. Keep our fingers crossed that we don't get a snowfall anytime soon. It should not be an issue.
Can we just say, should we ask them to flag that? Not, I mean, the, the snowmobile group.
They go through and put the trails.
I was gonna say, don't they mark? I think they do mark and put caution signs up and stuff of that sort.
My question is, last year, didn't we think, make a special track or something to go over around to?
I think they just did it.
I think they just did. I don't think it was official.
I don't know.
And I didn't have any issues with that last year, so.
What's the route to get to there? Because now they're gonna.
It's literally, they make their route across, uh. It's called commercial court or whatever, just miss it right up the street, just to park in the parking lot. And it had, it was not an issue, not an issue last year.
So do we have to approve this?
Yes, you'll have to sign off on it.
I'll make a motion to approve the. Snowmobile route.
A second.
Yeah, I.
John.
My guy.
We have anything else that's popped up? Everybody, okay, then we will open up for citizen comment one last time. You have mine? And we'll take a.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I.
John.
My guy.
I'll get, I'll get.
Now I gotta do my other job.